Madam Chair, it's four o'clock and we are recording.
The time is now four o'clock and we call this meeting of the Cocheese County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Would you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. We have some ground rules. Can you pull them up? There we go. You guys there? Thank you. Here are the ground rules. Please turn off your cell phones or at least silence the ringers. Please be polite to other stakeholders. No applause, no booing, no cheering. If you desire to speak, fill out a speaker information form and submit to the planner before the start of the meeting. This is not required for docket applicants. Speakers must use the microphone. Are we coming back? Speakers must use the microphone to capture comments in the minutes. We have a speaker's clock and have time limits. Five minutes for call to the public, 10 minutes for the applicants, five minutes for supporters or those opposed, and then five minutes for applicant's rebuttal. Meet the commission. Each elected county supervisor appoints three commissioners to staggered four-year terms. Up to three are from cities, at least six from unincorporated areas. A commissioner's service is pro bono. A quorum is five commissioners. A majority vote passes a motion, a tie vote fails. For special use permits, a tie vote triggers a rehearing at the next meeting. For special use dockets, they are approved by the commission. Appeals of special use decisions can be made to the Board of Supervisors and filed within 15 days of the commission approval. Appeal procedures can be obtained on the county website. For assistance, contact the case planner. For other docket decisions than special use, they result in recommendations forwarded by the commission to the Board of Supervisors. To voice disagreements with these recommendations, attend the Board of Supervisors' public hearing dealing with that docket. Now do our roll call. Mr. Montgomery.
I am here.
Mr. Limbach.
Present.
Mr. Watkins.
Here.
Mr. Young, are you online? Thank you. Mr. Gonzalez.
Present.
Mr. Marzky.
Present.
Mr. Saunders.
Present.
Ms. Welch, are you with us?
Yes.
Thank you. I am Kim Depew, District One. We do have a quorum tonight. Five or more is a quorum. Call to the public. Pursuant to ARS Section 38-431.01H, this is an opportunity for the public to comment. Individuals are invited to address the commission on any issue within the commissioner's jurisdiction. Since commissioners may not discuss items that are not specifically identified on the agenda, commission action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter, responding to any criticism or scheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Do we have any call to public? I have no forms. Is there anyone online?
Yes, Jana Ohm, Rusty Ohm, and Connie Ryan here with the Kaibab Manufacturing.
Excuse me, ma'am. Yeah, this is for comments for items that are not on the agenda.
Items that are not on the agenda.
Oh, sorry.
Not a problem. And whoever has a phone number that starts 52040, please mute your phone. There's a lot of noise going on in the background and it's disrupting the meeting.
We will move to approving the minutes from last month. Does anyone have any comments or corrections to those minutes? Hearing done. Can you get a motion to approve?
I'm here.
Mr. Marzky.
I'm over the way. Accept the minutes as mail.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Roll call vote to approve the minutes. Mr. Montgomery.
Aye.
Mr. Limbach.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
And Mr. Marzky.
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders, you were absent. And Ms. Welch, I believe you were absent. Is that correct? Ms. Welch. Thank you. Chairman Depew votes aye. The minutes from last month have passed. We now move to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Item one, docket RZ 23-01, named Treasure. The applicant requests a rezoning from SR 22, single residential, one dwelling per 22,000 square feet, to RU 4, which is rural, one dwelling per four acres. At this time, could we please have the planning director's presentation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. The applicant is Mr. Kevin Blackburn and Ms. Letitia Young. They are online with us this evening. As stated, the current zoning is SR 22, which is single residential, one dwelling per 22,000 square feet. Their request zoning is RU 4, which is one dwelling per four acres. It is in growth category D. Plan designation is rural. It is located in the Mid-Sulfur Springs Valley Community Plan. Existing uses on the site are an RV and some sheds. They're hoping to have a permitted single-family home built on that property. So it's located between Treasure Road and Knox, east of Sherwood Road in the Sunsites area. It is identified as parcel 11619251A. Parcel size is 4.22 acres. And you can see it there, highlighted in yellow on screen. Commission may recall directly to the northwest of this site, Catty Corner, we had a rezoning about two months that came before this board. It was recommended approval and was approved by the Board of Supervisors as well. This is the applicant's proposed site plan showing a 700-square-foot home and a future shop building with a... We're going to request a driveway off both Treasure and Sherwood Road. These are some photographs of the site as it sits out there today. We do have two factors in favor. It would comply with 11 of the applicable rezoning factors used by staff to analyze this request, and it would be in keeping with the character of the existing development in the area. We do not identify any factors against approval. With that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. We'd like to now call for the applicant's statement. Are they in the room?
Mr. Blackburn, this is your chance to make a statement to the commission.
Yes, hello. Thank you for having me. I pretty much ditto everything that Robert just said. We know we're hoping to build a small home and get this approved here so that we can, you know, get on with better days here. It's real nice out there and we really love the community, so we'd like to be a part of it. And I'd hope you consider this and accept this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. I'd like to now call for comments from other persons, either in favor or against. Is there anyone in the room or online? Hearing done. May I assume, Mr. Blackburn, that you don't need time for rebuttal?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. Call for commission discussion. You can ask either the staff or the applicant any questions you may have. Thank you. Mr. Young, Ms. Welch, any questions? All right, hearing no questions. I call for the planning director's summary and recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do recommend approval of this docket. We do not have any additional conditions as this parcel has already been combined, so we have no further conditions other than the standard. And we do have a sample motion for the commission this evening.
Thank you. A call for the motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Marzky.
I'm over. Recommend approval of the Board of Supervisors' rezoning docket RZ 2301, Treasure, located on parcel 11619251A from SR 22 to RU 4. Factors in favor of approval constitute the findings of fact.
Second.
Mr. Limbach.
No.
Mr. Watkins, thank you for your second. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Hearing done. Let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Montgomery.
Aye.
Mr. Limbach.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Marzky.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Ms. Welch. Ms. Welch, your vote? We will pass Ms. Welch. Chair votes aye. The ayes have it.
We're good.
Congratulations, and we move on.
Thank you so much.
Item number two is docket RZ 23-02 and CPA 23-01 on Patton Street. The applicant, Caleb Malbois, I hope I'm saying that correctly, is requesting a rezoning from R18, one dwelling per 18,000 square feet, to general business. A comprehensive plan amendment is also included because the area designated as C, Neighborhood Conservation. This designation does not allow zoning for general business. The applicant is requesting to change the neighborhood conservation to developing on the parcel. A call for the planning director's presentation. Mr. Kirsch.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and fellow commissioners. The applicant is Mr. Caleb Malloof, and he is in the audience this evening to speak to this request. This is located on State Highway 80 or Patton Street between Miller and Civil Roads in St. David. It is identified as parcel 12018021. It's approximately 1.7 acres in size. As stated, it is currently designated as R18, which allows for one dwelling unit per 18,000 square feet, and the proposed is for general business. It is in growth category C, rural community areas, which there's no change proposed to that, but it is further designated as neighborhood conservation, and the proposal is for developing. And that is because the neighborhood conservation does not allow for rezonings to general business. The commission may recall, also about two months ago, we had a docket almost adjacent to this one for a future gas station in the St. David area, and it was identical to this request. That item was also approved, recommended approval by this board and approved by the Board of Supervisors. It is located in the St. David area plan. It is currently vacant, heavily treed. The proposed use at this time is multifamily, however, all commercial uses would be allowed. This is an aerial photograph of the site. It is the parcel there highlighted in yellow. As I mentioned, it is very heavily treed, but currently vacant with no structures on it. So this is the comprehensive plan designations in the area. You can see most of the area is designated as neighborhood conservation. There is a area of C developing located there in the corner of Civil and Patton Street that was approved, as I mentioned, just recently for the future extension of that commercial district. This is the zoning in the area. So again, you can see the R18 located all around there, this parcel and the one directly to the west. They are both zoned R18. However, everything else along the block there in that photograph is zoned general business. And you'll see some photographs later. There are varying businesses there already today. Directly adjacent to the east of this site is a mini storage project. Directly to the east of that is an existing apartment building. There's a few multi-tenant buildings, including the water district office, hair salon, a small little retail store, et cetera. So the area definitely has a mixed use. We also have, as you can see with all the addresses, the dense RV park located right there in the corner of Civil and Patton Street. So this is the concept plan. The applicant is proposing to construct three, fourplexes on the site. That is, of course, subject to change. Anything under the general business could be approved. They would have to go through the commercial permit process and get those permitted as such. The site does have constraints on it, which may dictate how much is actually able to be developed on the site. It is entirely located in a flood zone, as most of St. David is. It also has no sewer in the area, though there is district water. There's no sewer, so they would have to be able to accommodate septic on that site, which the applicant is already working on the design for. This is an example of a type of product that he has already built within the city of Benson. Probably not exactly what will be built out there, but, you know, this is just a sample of what has been done. So when we have a rezoning request, we have 15 factors that we use to consider that item. And so it complies, as is, with 10 factors, including providing adequate site plan, concept plan. It complies with the site development standards, and those will be further evaluated upon permit submittal. Adjacent districts still remain compatible of development. There's no limitation, there's no creation of a non-conforming use. It is compatible with the existing development. Again, it's consistent with the rezoning to a more intense district. Adequate services and infrastructure. There is existing water, electric, and other services to the site. It is also located on a state highway. ADOT, excuse me, ADOT did have some comments, and they've been included as additional conditions on the docket this evening. So regardless of what development the applicant does, they will have to do a basic traffic study to evaluate the impacts on the state highway. They will have to get encroachment permits through ADOT, and whatever improvements are dictated by that traffic study, they would be required to improve. During the conversation with ADOT, one of the items that they did request from staff was for us to collect development impact fees from them to pay for the future widening of the highway through St. David. And if some of the commission that was here may recall, during the rezoning on the corner of Civil, ADOT does anticipate the center turn lane to be extended from St. David near Miller and Church Street, extending that turn lane all the way through past Civil. And so that would include this property. We did not have development impact fees, and so the discussion with ADOT ended with whatever was dictated by the traffic study to be improved would be what they would require. Water conservation, they would, of course, be required to comply with all of our low-flow fixtures, et cetera. Public input, we did receive three letters of opposition. That is the map that's on the screen in front of you. Two of the letters in opposition are already designated as commercial, so those parcels could develop into multifamily. They could do commercial development on there. The other one that is directly to the west of this location, that one also has a single-family home, and it is designated as the R18. But both that one and the one directly to the west of that, they both have views and are adjacent to the existing RV park, which is highly visible from their backyards, highly visible from State Route 80 as you're driving by. So this is consistent and compatible with the development out there. Some of the other concerns raised in their letters were the fact that this might be low-income housing or the other. That is not a factor for this commission. We are dealing in land use. And so this is a land use issue, whether or not the general business is appropriate at this location or not. The applicant may choose to answer that question further during their statement. As far as traffic circulation, we do have those conditions to comply with ADOT. It is located along a major street. So the one factor, just as the previous rezoning area, does not comply with the area plan. The St. David area plan, as the commission will recall, does not allow any general business rezonings, while all but one parcel in St. David that is commercial is general business. So staff believes that that is, though it may not comply on paper, it does comply with how the area has been zoned and developed historically. Two factors are not applicable. That's the infill, because those are only in our enterprise areas, and then there will be no hazardous materials on the site. So we have four factors in favor of approval, and that's the request complies with 12 of the applicable rezoning factors used by staff to analyze the request. The request would be in keeping with the character of the existing development in the area. The request would provide additional housing options in the St. David area, and the request is a logical extension of the existing commercial zoning. Factors against, we do have three letters in opposition, and it does not comply with that St. David area plan factor. So here are some site photographs. The top two are looking at the property. The bottom left is in front of the residence directly to the west, looking back towards the property. The bottom right, that is the self-storage facility located directly to the east of this location. Top left is an existing business in the area. Top right is a better photograph of the mini storage. Bottom left is that residence directly adjacent to the west, and then the bottom right is the existing apartment building located in the area. With that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. I now declare the public hearing open. It is time for the applicant's statement. Mr. Reilvolf, are you present? Sir, if you come to the microphone, state your name and address before speaking.
Caleb Malbof, 1770 East Ramsey Road, Benson. Everything Robert said was spot-on. I guess my clarify, it's not low-income housing. I'm the only owner and the financer, so I pretty much, I'm going to rent to whoever's willing to pay the most, not the least. And, yeah, I think that's it.
At this time, I call for any comments from other persons, either for or against. Is there anyone in the room? Hearing done. I move forward to the applicant's rebuttal. I'm assuming you're satisfied, sir? There's nothing else to say? Thank you. The public hearing is now closed. It's time for the commission to discuss this docket number. Are there any questions in the room?
I might have one question.
Mr. Montgomery.
It was about the supplied photographs, but staff did just review them. If I may maybe ask the applicant one question about those? Yeah, come on over.
Yes, please. Could you return?
Okay. Simple question. Just wanted to know, thank you, if these photos are representative in some way of what you had in mind.
Very close.
Very close.
Those ones that you showed a picture of are actually duplexes. You can only see that from the front.
Okay.
The ones that I'm kind of proposing, well, that's half of it. So it'd be like, if you looked on the back, because I'm proposing fourplexes, so they'd be back-to-back.
Okay.
So it'd be like double that if you looked at the other side.
Okay.
Thank you. That's my question.
Is there any other questions? Mr. Young.
I do have a question. Robert, you explained this property, where is it in regards to the apartment complex? And how many units are in that apartment complex?
So if you're able to see my screen right now, the parcel that we're, that's in question, highlighted in yellow, directly to the east, that is the mini storage, and to the east of that is where the apartment complex is.
Okay.
And I believe there is four units in that apartment building.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Welch, are you with us? Do you have any questions? Have we lost Ms. Welch?
If she doesn't respond, we just have to assume she's dropped off. Yeah.
All right, and I'll call for the planning director's summary and recommendation, please.
Thank you. So as I stated, we do have four specific conditions of approval that requires, requires the driveway to be paved to ADOT specifications. The applicant shall submit a traffic impact statement to ADOT and the county for review and approval. The applicant shall obtain an encroachment permit from ADOT. Additional improvements, as determined by the traffic impact statement, may be required. All improvements shall be completed prior to the issuance of the first sortative occupancy. That is, of course, in addition to all of our other standard conditions of approval, including floodplain, septic, et cetera, compliance. With that, I do have two sample motions on the screen. The comprehensive plan amendment needs to be taken first, because if that would not be approved, then the rezoning would die.
I'd like to call for the first motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Watkins.
I move to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors' comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 23-01, Patton, located on parcel 120-18-021, with the conditions of approval recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constitute the findings of fact.
In a second.
Second.
We'll go with Mr. Limbach. Is there any further discussion of this motion? Any further questions? Let's do a roll call vote. Mr. Montgomery.
Aye.
Mr. Limbach.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
And Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Marzky.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This motion passes in terms of the comprehensive plan amendment. Thank you. We move to the second motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach.
I move to recommend approval to the Board of Supervisors' rezoning, RZ 23-01, Patton, located on parcel 120-18-021, with the condition of approval recommended by staff. The factors in favor of approval constituting the findings of fact.
In a second.
Second.
Mr. Marzky, thank you. Is there any further discussion of this motion? Or any questions? Let's move to the vote. Mr. Montgomery.
Aye.
Mr. Limbach.
Aye.
Mr. Watkins.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Aye.
Mr. Marzky.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
And I'm assuming, Ms. Welch, we're not hearing you still? The chair votes aye. Motion passes. Item three is docket SU 23-03 for contract construction. This is a special use authorization request for a contract construction services business in an R36 zoning district. At this time, I'd like to call for the planning director's presentation.
Good evening. As stated, the applicant is requesting special use authorization to operate a contract construction service business in an R36 zoning district. The property is located in Benson off of Ramsey Road. It is on a frontage road for Interstate I-10. Here are photos of the site. The upper-left photo shows the entrance to the property. The upper-right photo shows the office location. The lower-left photo shows the vehicle storage area. The lower-right photo shows the business vehicles. This is the site plan for the project. This is the site plan for the project. The property is zoned R36, as are the adjoining parcels to the west and the south. The adjoining parcels to the north and the east are zoned RU4. The applicant mailed notices to the property owners within 300 feet of his parcel. Development Services mailed notices to the property owners within 900 feet of his parcel. We received two letters of opposition to the project. The residents noted concerns regarding wear and tear on the frontage road. They also expressed concerns about groundwater contamination resulting from leaking fuel, excuse me, fuel tanks that are used to fuel business trucks on-site, and also from the trucks leaking fluids. Of the 10 factors used to evaluate special use requests, this project fully complies with five factors. It will comply with an additional factor if a waiver from one of the site development standards is granted. Two factors are not applicable, and the special use does not comply with two factors. The factors in favor of the request are, one, compliance with duly adopted plans; two, compliance with the development along major streets. Again, this frontage road is within ADOT's jurisdiction rather than the county's jurisdiction, and ADOT did not object to the project. The applicant has submitted an encroachment permit application to ADOT. Number three, compliance with adequate services and infrastructure. The internal reviewing agencies did not request improvements. One of our external reviewing agencies, Arizona Game and Fish, requested that the exterior motion lights be put on motion sensors. The applicant agrees to do this, and this has, has been added as a condition of approval. Compliance with significant site development standards. The project complies with all site development standards, with the exception of the requirement that the site be gravel-surfaced. It's presently native-surfaced, and the applicant stated that it be cost-prohibitive to gravel the entire site. He is requesting a waiver of this standard. Number five, compliance with off-site impacts. The project will not generate significant off-site impacts. Compliance with water conservation factor, this is a low-water-use project. And then the factors against the request are, one, does not comply with the public input factor. This is because there are two letters of opposition to the special use. Again, the residents cited concerns about wear and tear on the road, and also the contamination of groundwater from the fuels. And then the second factor that it does not comply with is the zoning purpose factor. Section 70101 and 70102 state that the purpose for this zoning district is to provide an area for families living at a variety of low to medium densities, and to provide an area where single-family dwellings, rehabilitated mobile homes, and manufactured homes can coexist. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bronson. The public hearing is now open, and I call for the applicant's statement. You're going to get your exercise, Mr. Malbach.
I think everything she said was accurate. As you can see by the pictures, we're already using the site. So, few things. I asked to, you know, request to not import gravel, because it would be very cost-prohibitive, and we've already imported a capped soil, like a decomposed granite soil, that's like a dust-free soil. So, same thing as gravel, but, so, would request to not do that. And, like I said, with the road wear and tear, we've already had a permit in with the ADOT for quite a while, so just waiting on the permit to do our, our pavement approach, which will mitigate wear and tear. And also just want to say, you know, this is my house, I live here, I am not going to take a stance on contaminating the groundwater. Me and my kids drink out of our well right there also. But, and I'm extremely fastidious with my, all my equipment, like, I don't have any leaps. If I do, it's repaired very quickly. And I would be happy to agree to put my fuel tanks in a containment as a condition, because it's on my plans anyway, I just haven't quite got it done yet, but I'd be happy for that to be a condition, if that makes my neighbors feel better. So, I think that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is the time for comments from other persons, either in favor or against. Don't have any requests to speak. Is there anyone in the room? Anyone online wish to speak on this docket? Hearing none. Called for the applicant's rebuttal. Did you think of anything else to say? Thank you, sir. The public hearing is now closed. Now is the time for commission discussion and the planning director's summary. Are there any questions from the dais?
I do not.
Anyone?
No.
Questions? Mr. Young, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. We please have the planning director's summary and recommendation.
Yes, staff recommends conditional approval, approval, excuse me, with the following conditions of approval. In addition to complying with Article 16 light pollution of the zoning regulations, a motion sensor device shall be installed on building-mounted lighting. The surface improvement requirements for the parking and outdoor storage area pursuant to section 180407 and 180408 of the Cochise County zoning regulations shall be waived. If you would like to add an additional condition per the applicant's presentation to you regarding the fuel tanks, an additional condition could be fuel tanks shall be contained.
Thank you, Ms. Bronson.
There is a sample motion for you.
Thank you. Call for the motion.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Martzki?
I move to approve docket SU 2303, CM Contract Construction Service, with the following conditions of approval. In addition to complying with Article 16 light pollution of the zoning regulations, motion sensor device shall be installed on building-mounted lighting, including in the waiver of service improvement requirements for parking, outdoor storage area pursuant to section 1804.07 and 1804.08 of Cochise County zoning regulations shall be waived. Factors in favor and pro constitute the findings in fact.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Saunders, second that motion. Are there any further questions from the commission? Roll call vote. Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
And Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Nancy is back online.
Ms. Welch, were you able to hear that docket? We will have her abstain for this vote. The ayes have it. The motion is passed. Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Item number four, docket SU 23-04, Whittaker Engine Repair. This applicant initiated special use, is jointly requesting that the item be continued to June 14, 2023. This allows the applicant time to proactively address active code compliance issues on-site prior to consideration of the special use. Do we have a sample motion, or do you have to wing it?
Yeah, I apologize.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martzki?
I move that we table this to June 14, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gonzalez. Thank you. Roll call vote again. Mr. Montgomery?
Aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Martzki?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The ayes have it. We will look at this docket at a future date. Moving on to item number five, docket SU 2305, Kaibab Manufacturing. An applicant initiated special use authorization request to lawfully establish a manufacturing business in a structure not to exceed 5,000 square feet on a rural zone parcel. Will we please have the planning director's presentation?
Good evening. This is a special use authorization request, docket SU 2305. The applicant's Christopher and Gloria Beth Rush requests special use authorization to operate a manufacturing business not to exceed 5,000 square feet on a five-acre parcel, AVN 20622115, in unincorporated Cochise, Arizona. The establishment of a manufacturing business is subject to special use authorization from the Planning and Zoning Commission in a rural zoning district. The business will be co-located on a parcel with an existing home at 372 West Kaibab Way, where indicated by the graphic. Currently, the parcel has a manufactured home, detached garage, small storage building, septic well, which will remain. The applicant proposes construction of a steel building not to, not to exceed 5,000 square feet in size to conduct a business that assembles small electrical components. Here's the concept plan. The private residential uses are indicated in green. The proposed business is in red. The applicants would like to use it for, would like for it to be located in the southeastern corner of the site outside the floodplain to the rear of the property, as shown on the graphic. An insulated prefabricated metal building is proposed to house the business. A driveway and parking for the business are also shown on the plan. And here are some photos. The top two are on the northern portion of the site, looking south. On the top-right photo, you can see the house where the applicants live. And the bottom photos show the rear of the site roughly where the building would be constructed. It's a level site. There are currently no trees or vegetations. Zoning east of Desert Road is RU4, rural minimum lot size four acres. The area has a mix of low-density housing and agriculture. You can see the pivot south of Havasu Way. To the west of Desert Road is SR43 zoning. This area has been planted but not developed. RU4 zoning encourages non-residential and non-agricultural activities, which serve local needs or provide a service and are compatible with rural living. The limited size of the proposed business suggests it can be compatible form of development if properly conditioned. The land use for the property is Category D rule. Our definition of manufactured, manufacturing in the zoning regulations is as follows. It's a broad category of uses involving use of mechanical power and machinery to produce parts from raw materials, repair or alter materials for use in a finished product, or to assemble parts into products, including processing. In this case, the applicant is primarily altering the products for use and assembling, which tends to result in fewer environmental impacts concerns than raw production. I mention that because we did receive several, or a handful of letters of objection from some of the neighbors. They had concerns of environmental impacts, pollutants, and the presence of a manufacturing business in a residential area. The applicants state that there will not be any hazardous materials on-site or manufactured. Neighbors also had traffic concerns. The applicant states there will be no onsite retail use of the site, only two employees, and very little traffic attracted to the site. There are 10 factors we use to evaluate all special use requests. In this case, eight of those factors apply. It fully complies with five factors. It complies with conditions regarding three factors. The development along major streets and hazardous material factors do not apply. I do recommend some conditions to mitigate potential off-site impacts and traffic concerns. This includes entering into a private maintenance agreement for Kaibab Way, limiting building size, height, and color to help it blend in with the neighborhood, limiting hours of operation, mandating that all business take place inside, requiring an insulated structure, and no outdoor storage. In terms of factors in favor of their request, it's consistent with the goals and policies of comp plan and the purpose of the zoning district. It fully complies, at least partially, with all applicable factors used to evaluate special use requests. This is a locally-owned family business, and this is employment and tax revenue for the county. In terms of factors against approval, there can be compatibility issues between residential and manufacturing, which is why it's considered a special use rather than a permitted one. We did receive letters of objection, again, from four neighbors. And I will now pause for the applicant's presentation discussion from the commission. Mr. and Mrs. Rush are in attendance tonight.
Thank you, Ms. McLaughlin. The public hearing is now declared open, and it is time for the applicant's statement. Would it be Mr. or Ms. Rush coming forward? All right, if you come, come to the microphone. State your name and address before speaking, please.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Gloria Beth Rush. My address is 372 West Kaibab Way, Cochise, Arizona 85606. I am the Office Manager, Secretary, and Treasurer of REM Products. REM Products was started in 1995 by my husband and his father in Tucson, Arizona. I joined the team in 2012 and started out as an assembler in the back and worked my way up to office manager. My main goal as office manager was so that his father Chuck could eventually retire. Unfortunately, we lost Chuck in 2021 due to COVID, and Chris and I decided to continue the business as a family business and carry on Chuck's legacy and dream. In 2019, we moved out from Tucson to Cochise County and bought a five-acre lot. We absolutely fell in love with the area, and at that point in time, we decided, in 2019, when Chuck first passed away, I'm sorry, when we first moved out there in 2019, Chuck was still alive, so we were doing the commute, because he was older, 75, and lived in Tucson. Once Chuck passed away, we started thinking about the fact if we could possibly bring the business home, so that way we would not have to do the 144-mile commute, you know, round trip per day, plus have more family time. We are empty nesters and do have six beautiful grandchildren that we try to spend most of our time with. Excuse me. Our son Christopher lives in Sunsite, so he as well does the commute every day back and forth. He has four children. And our other employee is a Tucson resident who is an empty nester with no grandchildren and states he would not mind the commute. We currently do have just our two employees and us as well, and we do live right there on the property. With regards to the roads, my son would be driving down the 191 to Dragoon and then over to Desert. Our employee would be coming in on Dragoon, heading east, and going to the stronghold and down to the Kaibab exit. We have no issues or problems with going and signing the maintenance agreement for the roads, for the non-maintained roads, and the prefab, prefab manufactured building that we're looking at purchasing would be beige and white trim, which is the same as our house, so it would blend in nicely. My husband Chris would like to talk to you about some of our products.
Hello, my name is Christopher Rush, 372 West Kaibab Way, Cochise, Arizona 85606. I would like to thank Madam Chair and the commissioners for seeing our application As my wife stated, we've been in business for 28 years. We do produce approximately 70 items in our catalog. They're constantly changing, but they are all for the armed services. They include relays, starter boxes, thermostatic switches. We also assemble some circuit cards. I do have some items here today, if you want to see an example of them. Our parts are completely safe for the environment. We do use water-soluble fluxes, lead-free sodders. We do occasionally paint, but those are the same items like Krylon or Asbrand paints. The environmental impact would be very low on the area. The, we work inside, the only noise from the outside that you would ever hear is maybe an air compressor turning on from time to time after we wash parts. We do just wash the residues off of the parts, mainly from hand washing, you know, from your hands and things like that. The hours of operation that we do have is seven The hours of operation that we do have is 7:00 to 5:30, Monday through Thursday. So after that time, it would be completely shut down with no noise. Any lighting would be set on motion sensors, so there wouldn't be any light pollution at all. And all of our goods are purchased, and then we assemble them. We are considered a manufacturer, but we're really an assembler. Our machine parts are made in Tucson. So when they get to us, they're already plated or coated. So any kind of hazardous waste has already been rinsed off of them before they come to us. And all of our goods are brought to us by FedEx, UPS, and USPS, which we see in the neighborhood every day. And then they also go out the same way. So most people won't even know that we're there. That's about all I have to say, and thank you guys very much for hearing.
And if you'd like to see any of our parts, we did bring a box of parts to us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is the time for comments from other persons, either in favor or against.
My name is Will Navarro, and next to me is my wife Cindy Navarro. And I'll allow, please, you know, the other members of the opposing team as well to speak first before I do. Thank you.
I have no slips of speakers. Does staff have?
Okay.
Let's address the gentleman online first.
All right, let me go ahead and speak up. Thanks to the board for allowing us to oppose this proposition. And let me introduce myself first. I am a disabled U.S. Air Force veteran of 21 years. I am very, I'm fairly knowledgeable about Department of Defense contracts and subcontracts. I was a quality assurance evaluator for multimillion dollar worth of contracts. And after my military service, I was Assistant Configuration Engineer in evaluating and auditing also primary contractors and subcontractors. And followed by working as, with the Department of Justice, working in the litigation and forensic as analyst. We'd further do, as we submitted our letter, my wife and I. Personally, I totally oppose this project because of my medical conditions. We have chosen, we're pleased to announce that, yes, of all these states and places that to move to, that regards that would help me with my medical conditions, we chose this location. And we know that, you know, being a military, we've moved around so much around the world, and we finally chose this place to be our ultimate location. And I'm under the care of the Veterans Administration with some health issues that are currently being monitored. One of the concerns that we have prior to purchasing our property in November is the quality of the water. Yes, we did. We completed that. We have set a baseline for the quality of the water that we're going to be drinking.
The noise.
And also, we're considering the location. All the things, you know, the noise, the pollution, and all of those are considered, and this is the best place for us. My concern with this proposal, I would like to note too, is because nowhere in the documents that have been uploaded to the county for these purposes of this discussion, the name, official name as registered of the business, with, you know, the first question that I have too, is this business registered with the system for award management? And wanting to, is this, do they have UEI and NAC codes that I can further my research? And you have to meet certain requirements too, size standards, and also if this, this business is registered with the system for award management, that's a SAM, that is in compliance with the Code of Federal Regulations, CFR, and also the unique, excuse me, CFR, the Defense Federal Acquisition Regulations, and the Federal Acquisition Regulations. It's a lot of long list of compliance that no documents that shows those have been complied with. So with those said, I strongly oppose this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Could you please restate your address?
My address is 408 West Kaibab Way, Cochise, Arizona 85606.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online that wishes to address this docket? Hearing none. We have a gentleman in the room.
Hi.
Madam Chair, I do apologize. There was at least one person on line earlier. Her name is Gina.
Yes.
All right, Ms. Gina, go ahead. State your full name and address.
My husband is going to speak. I'll let him take over.
Hi, this is Rusty Ohm at 342 West Kaibab Way, 85606. Thank you for letting me talk. My first question is, the community here, the surrounding homes, is that what's this going to do to our property taxes if it is permitted? You know, is it going to go up? And another question, when I bought this place two years ago, what I paid for is half gone from the foot traffic that comes through here, the thieves. There's people that live on the very west side of Desert Road that nobody knows about, the homeless. They come through here every night, and they take things. Are they going to actually put a fence up around this place? Because it would be an excellent target for people to come through, to go through, to get to their business. And the third is, who, if there's problems in the future, who governs the problems? As for the waste, air, the noise, or anything that comes up, anything that arises, who's going to be in charge of the problems? Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else online?
Yeah, can I, this Will Navarro again, I'll have an addition, please.
No, sir, you've had your time to speak.
All right, no problem. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move.
I just, hi. My name is Cindy Navarro.
Ma'am, you've had your time to speak. Thank you very much. Now, we're moving on. Mr. Thomas, could you come up?
They won't let you?
Date your name and address for the record, sir.
Yes, my name is Alan Thomas. I'm at 311 West Kaibab Way, Cochise, Arizona 85606. I live right down the street from my neighbors, who I've unfortunately have never met. I have a question. You mentioned that there were a number of letters that came back opposing. How many letters were sent out, and how many came back opposing or for this business?
Sir, this is a time for your comments.
Okay.
Regarding this matter. You've posed the question now, and if the folks maybe could address that.
Beyond that, it's a very, very quiet residential area. I'm retired. My wife is retired. We don't really care to have a business that starts at 7:00 in the morning. The road that we live on is absolutely horrid. It is not county maintained. Elevation changes as you drive down the street could be up to a foot. Okay? It is nothing but dirt, and any traffic whatsoever that comes in there would just be detrimental, and we don't want the noise. I don't know of a single neighbor that I have talked to that is for this. That's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Suggestion, build a building in Sunsite's or use one of the vacant buildings that's already there.
Moving on, it is time for the applicant's rebuttal. Date your names again, please, for the record.
Yes, ma'am. Gloria Beth Rush and Christopher Rush. With regards to, I'm trying to remember everything that was asked. With regards to one of the questions about the water. We do have our own private well. With regards to any contamination, there will be no water contamination. The water that will be used will be for basic hand washing, and as Christopher said, washing of the parts, which is basically just to get the, our employees' oils as they're dealing with the parts and assembling them. All of the parts are put together with hand tools, basic drills, screwdrivers. So as far as noise goes, there will be no noise except for the air compressor that will be occasionally going off when we're drying the parts. With regards to water usage, I did actually bring bills with us from Tucson City. Our water bill has never gone higher than $38, and I brought, I believe, five months' worth of bills for anyone that would like to review them. With regards to our parts coming in and out and maintaining the roads, as my husband said, they would be coming in through FedEx, UPS, and USPS. No big freight trucks, no big FedEx freight trucks, just your regular standard delivery trucks that we see every day as we're driving in between back and forth to work. And it's not even an everyday delivery. We have schedules. We have parts delivered. You know, it's literally not an everyday delivery. I'm trying to remember anything else that might have been mentioned.
People opposed or people left?
Oh, well, that's not necessarily concerning. As far as property taxes going up, I was told that property taxes would not be going up because we decided to do this. I don't know 100% if that's accurate or not, but from what I had read, property taxes would not go up for our neighbors.
As far as the fence that Rusty was talking about, our yard is already fenced in.
Yes, our yard is fenced in, and we would have, just as we do on our home, we have Ring cameras on our home. We would also have a security system and Ring cameras on our building. We, I don't know if it's because our property is fenced in and his not, but on our Ring cameras, we've never had anybody come through our yard or steal anything off of our property. It's unfortunate if it is happening to him, but our yard is fully fenced in, all five acres.
Is there anything else?
No, that'll do it.
Thank you.
As far as we can remember.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The public hearing is now closed. This is the time for commission discussion. Can either ask the applicant or the staff any questions you may have.
Madam Chair, I do have a question or two.
Mr. Montgomery, please.
Okay. First of all, these fine folks offered visual on some of your products.
Yes, sir.
Would you mind? Okay. And while they're moving up, I would ask staff, which you may be doing this anyway in a few minutes, but the recommended conditions and waivers, there are five items on there. At some point, could I get you to read those out loud? Okay, I think they address all of the concerns we just heard. Thank you. Okay. Oh, this is way beyond me.
Just, it's a variety we wanted to be able to show.
And so you assemble these, you make these?
Yes, sir. And I also do have letters from the two major machine shops that we purchased, all of our metal machines, the boxes and the housings for everything. Basically.
We are not a machine shop. We farm that out.
Yeah, we contracted out, send out POs. They have it all delivered to us. They do all of the plating, anything that's toxic. Literally, we get all of the raw components in and just sit and assemble it.
Well, that's beyond me, but I am impressed. And it does look rather quiet. Yeah, like, most of it, screwdrivers, soldering knives. Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation. I got it.
Mr. Gonzalez.
So, to be very clear, you're an assembler. You're not a manufacturer. You're not manufacturing anything.
No. We make prints, and we send them to machine shops, and they machine all the raw materials, and they get them coated. Like, this is anodized there. This is nickel plated there. So those already come to us like that. So we wind the cord, you know, we solder on connector, and then we screw the connector on and to guts and that kind of thing like that.
Right.
But yeah, like I said, the occasional air compressor, which maybe two, three times a week, you know, would all be it. And if it's a time restraint kind of thing, I have no problem doing it in the afternoon, or, you know, it doesn't have to be at 7:00 in the morning.
Yep. Thank you.
And, Madam Chair, and I just thought of one thing that Mr. Navarro, our neighbor, did mention with regards to the different classifications.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Please, Lord, please.
With regards to our neighbor, Mr. Navarro, and his concerns with if we are compliant, we, 99.9% of our contracts are through DLA. We are monitored quarterly by DCMA with regards to all of our compliances to make sure that our quality manual's up to par, to make sure everything that we are doing is by DoD guidelines. So we are completely monitored. I do have records of all of our audits. We are monitored every three months. So all of that is on the up and up in compliant. And he also mentioned being listed in SAM's registry. We are listed. We do have a cage code. It's 045F6, and the full company name, for his knowledge, is REM Products Incorporated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any further questions before she leaves?
Yeah, this is Mr. Navarro. I have a quick question. Is?
Sir, the time for the public hearing is closed. This is now time for commission discussion. Sorry. Anyone on the commission?
You've been doing this for 28 years or something like?
Yes, sir. The business was started in 1995.
Noise you have is there compared to those on the north?
Yes, sir. That's the end of the noise. Everything we do is inside. It's basically, you know, like what we work in now is an office building, basically. And the guys all have their desks. We have, you know, a sink to wash the parts in, and that's pretty much it.
All right. One more, Chairman.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, quickly. Again, I'm going to ask for the conditions because they do address all the concerns so far. But one that's not listed, and we always deal with it, is lighting, night light, light pollution. So while that's not mentioned right here, could you mention it?
Yes, sir, I can. Basically, like we said, our business will close at 5:30. The only light that will be attached to the building are the lights that go with the security cameras, just like we have at our home. The Ring cameras, which are all motion detected. That'll be the only lighting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Young, do you have any questions online?
Yes, I do. Mr. and Mrs. Rush, other than the two vehicles, the two employees coming and going daily, how many other UPS, FedEx, postal service vehicles per week will be coming and going to your business?
I would have to estimate that. For example, today is Wednesday, and I've had one UPS truck today that actually delivered paperwork, and that was it. But that's all we've had so far this week. It would vary from week to week, but it's not an everyday basis. It's sometimes not even an every week basis. It would just depend on when they got the parts there.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions for staff? Thank you, folks. You may sit down now.
Thank you.
I'd like to now call for the planning director's summary. Ms. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Staff recommends conditional approval of the request. If the commission wishes to grant the approval, staff recommends the following conditions. Condition one, the applicant will be required to enter into a private maintenance agreement to participate in the maintenance of the non-maintained roadway, Mr. Kaibab Way. Condition two, limits the building size to no more than 5,000 square feet, no higher than one story, which is less than the 30 feet allowed by ZO. no higher than one story, which is less than the 30 feet allowed by zoning. Condition three, states that all business activities shall occur indoors. There shall be no outdoor business storage. Condition four, limits hours of operation to weekdays between 7:00 a.m. and 5:30 p.m. Condition five, grants of reduction in the parking requirement based on the size and type of building. Zoning mandates no fewer than nine parking spaces. This many spaces would make the structure appear less residential, and there's only need really for a couple spaces. So a reduction from nine to seven parking spaces is recommended as a waiver. Standard condition waiver forms, permitting timeframes, permitting responsibilities, and modifications still apply. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for additional questions. And there's a sample motion on the slide for the commission's consideration.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to call for the motion, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
I move to approve docket SU 23-05, Kelly Bob Manufacturing. With the conditions of approval recommended by staff, the factors of approval constituting findings affect.
Second.
Mr. Marzky, second. Thank you. Is there any further questions from the commission?
I just have a comment.
Mr. Watkins?
If this was just a homeowner who wanted to build a shop, he wouldn't even be here. But they could turn that shop into a neighborhood garage and not particularly be a business. The kids, you know, bring their cars over and they're working inside, outside, causing lots of noise. Or even a farm shop. You get all kinds of noise and unfortunately contamination and stuff like that. Where I see this is very clean inside assembly, not a manufacturing, but an assembly facility. That's the only comment.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes.
I do, whenever.
Mr. Montgomery?
Yes, just for the record, in response to one of the letters in opposition, I want to state clearly that I have never met any of these fine folks, either for or against, and would not ever consider that. I would recuse myself had I been involved with any effort in this commission. But I do not know you guys. I'm glad to know you now, all of you. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. It's time for the vote. Mr. Montgomery, how do you vote?
We'll vote aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Marzky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Motion passes. Congratulations.
Yes, well done. Did like the presentation. It was helpful.
Item number six is docket SU 2306, Scott Hip Camp. A request for special use authorization to establish a campground under guest lodging. At this time, I would like to call for the Planning Director's presentation. Mr. Kirschman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a 36-acre parcel. Approximately nine acres of this will be used for the special use request. Current zoning is RU4, which is rural, one dwelling per four acres. No change to the zoning is proposed. It is in growth category D. Rural is the comprehensive plan designation. There is no area plan. Current use is vacant recreational vehicle and cargo retainer. Proposed use is guest lodging and a campground. This is the site. It's identified as parcel 11145054, located on Drifter's Way west of Frontier. This is the applicant's concept site plan, which include, and it's very hard to see on the screen, but it was included in the packet. There will be two 26-foot-tall teepees proposed on the northern end of the site, along with a single-family residence where either the applicant or a caretaker of the campground will live. There's also a group bathhouse, shower house proposed on the site there on the northern end. There are six campsites that are proposed around a circular driveway, and then two old Conestoga wagons that will be restored into guest lodging. This one change that will be, obviously, this is a concept plan, but when the site plan is submitted for its commercial permits, we do have a condition that all access to the campsites will be interior. So if you'll notice, on the west side, they're showing access of campsite six and five going out to a road that doesn't exist as of today. Those campsites will be turned inward, and all access will be straight from the campsite. This way, they have to register with the office first before just coming and going onto the site. Here's some photographs of the site. It is very rural. There is a agricultural support business located nearby, one single-family residence towards the north, pecan groves, as well as an area that's been cleared for future agricultural activities to the southeast. The bottom right photo is the entrance to the portion of the property where the applicant is staying at this point. All of his area is covered in gravel to keep dust down, make it easier to traverse the area once it rains. Site was very clean and orderly. So he's expect, he's expressed the interest to continue that type of development over into his campground if he is granted approval. Some additional photos of the, of the area. Again, that top left showing the gravel access. On the right-hand side, that is an agricultural support building for the industry out there. Bottom left is an existing teepee that he has at one of his other campgrounds outside the state. And then the bottom right is just example of what he would like to do with some of these wagons he's going to bring onto the site. There are 10 factors that we use to evaluate all special use proposals as submitted. It complies with five. It complies with three with conditions. There's the traffic circulation, significant site development standards, and then the public input. We did receive one letter in support, two in opposition. Opposition was citing CCNRs and the fact that certain, according to their interpretation, certain businesses are not allowed. The applicant disputes that. I'm sure he will discuss that in his presentation this evening. And then we have two factors that are not applicable, which is hazardous materials and development along major streets. We do have five factors in favor of supporting the request. And so with the recommended conditions of approval, it would fully comply with eight of the applicable special use factors used by staff to analyze the request. The project will provide diversity of business discussed within the comprehensive plan by providing supportive entrepreneurialship of a different type of business in the county. Comprehensive plan states entrepreneurialship is essential and should be encouraged as part of an economy-based land use policy. Supporting small businesses will not only spur diversified income opportunities and ensure economic competitiveness, but will also foster resilience in the face of economic challenges such as natural disasters. This business adds to that diversity. Comprehensive plan also states to support preservation and expansion of Cocheese County stores, in which this does. We did have one letter of support received. We do have two factors in opposition. And though the county does not enforce CCNRs, the HOA has submitted a letter in opposition to the request. With that, that concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is in the audience this evening, prepared to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. The public hearing on this matter is now open. Would like to call for the applicant's statement if you'd come forward. Is it Mr. Scott?
Yes, good evening.
Thank you, sir. State your name and address.
Dave Scott. My mailing address is 1900 Northeast 3rd Street, 106-29 Bend, Oregon 97701. There's one thing I say every time I walk out of Roberts' office to the guard downstairs. There ought to be more Roberts in this world. He's been very helpful for me. Number two, when the wind was blowing 62 miles an hour the other day, you couldn't have paid me a million bucks to put that hip camp in. But every morning, I get up and listen to the birds and the quail and the coyotes howling. That is a very perfect spot for a hip camp. If you don't know what hip camps are, I don't have time to explain it to you, but it is extremely successful across the United States, across Canada, across England, and across Australia. It's the, it's the BRBO and the Airbnb of the camping world on private property. There's only one thing wrong with it. I don't own it. So, I have a very successful hip camp in central Oregon in a national monument. I was voted number three in the nation for glamping last year, number seven in Oregon for camping. I know what I'm doing. And I have zero tolerance for BS and incompetence, and I don't allow anything that makes any noise in my hip camp. And this will be the same way. The opposition from the HOA, he's got the cart before the horse. We have nothing to discuss with the HOA until the permit is either approved or denied. If it's approved, then we take the next step with the HOA. I can tell you that the HOA is on the way out. In six months, it will not be in existence. If it's denied, then that's a whole nother matter. In other than that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now is the time for comments, either for or against this matter. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak? Is there anyone in the audience? Hearing none. The applicant may have rebutted. Did you think of anything you missed when you first spoke? Thank you, Mr. Scott. The public hearing is now closed. It is the time for commission discussion with questions either for the applicant or staff. Are there any?
I have one question. It'll be quick. Does he need to come up first?
Could you please come back, sir?
Okay. And it really isn't a factor in this decision. It's just for my own curiosity. What is the materials of that? How is that thing built?
Well, actually, that one is, it's a form of a canvas. That company's in Tumalo, Arizona. It's called Nomadic Teepies. They've been in business about 32 years. I tried to buy it about 10 years ago. She wouldn't sell it. Now, what she does is use the same material, but she treats it with acrylics, a clear acrylic, and they last about twice as long. That teepee is in Napa, California, and I've had it down there now about seven years, and it's just now starting to deteriorate.
Mm-hmm. Is it the same on the inside?
The liner is the same material. It goes up nine feet high. I actually put rebar in my teepees, three, three round pieces, and push them up tight, and that way you don't get the concave. And then when I put wood stoves in them, I put, I put a ceiling in them. I actually use painter's tar. And, and I put graphics on it. And then in the summer, I roll it up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you for that.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Limbach?
One more question. With respect to the bathhouse, how do you control the, the use of the water? Is there any concern?
Well, you know, probably it'll be, you know, up at the one I have at the lake. I don't have a bathhouse. I have four. It's only a three-month operation because of snow. The winter, I use porta-potties. But obviously, this is a different environment down here. I probably have the time lapse on the showers. And then, you know, the kind of toilets that control the flush, you don't use, but about, I think about 30% of the same water. And, but this is a little different. They don't just show up. They book online. And I have, a hip camp has a message system. So when, when, when they book, I know who's coming, what the circumstances are, have a communication with them. And then a week before they arrive, I regurgitate that conversation. So I know who's coming, what's going on, what the circumstances are. This is not the kind of campground where they're going to drive down the road and go in and stay. It's all, it's all booked. It's all controlled 100%. I know who's coming and when they're coming, by the way. Yeah.
It's a big difference.
I'm real, I'm real hands-on. I bet that my hip camp now, this is the fourth year, 87% of the bookings already repeats, and I've got close to 400 of recommendations. It's crazy, but I run a tight ship. That's why they keep coming back.
Thank you, sir.
Stand by, Mr. Scott. Is there any further questions?
I have a question. How long do they have to stay there?
I would probably hear, up, up at the lake, I don't think I ever have anybody stay longer than two or three days unless they rent the whole campsite, and that happens, starting to happen a lot. I was thinking probably a three-day limit. I mean, I'm, you know, people are going to come and camp and stay. These aren't transits. A lot of these hip campers go clear across the United States, back and forth, and they stay in a hip camp. They never stay in any other kind of campground. It's always hip camps. I think there's over 9,000 listings now across the United States.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Mr. Scott, I have a question.
Yes. You're asking? Get out that quick.
I haven't really heard a good discussion of traffic. I mean, how much increase?
Well, you know, that's funny. You know, there, there were some comments on that traffic on the manufacturing building. I've been out there now almost six months. And the most traffic that goes by my site, which is right next to where the hip camp is, goes back and forth to where a young lady is caretaking one of the board of directors' place. Now, I don't know how come there's so much traffic, and I'm not going to ask because it's none of my business. But between that and the UPS truck and the FedEx truck going to Dustin's place behind, and the Sunday drivers, is more traffic than what will be the hip camp. Dustin and his wife go back and forth to work every day. So if I was 50% full with six campsites and four units, that's 10. That'd be five rigs coming in and probably spend two days. I may do a two-day minimum because of Tombstone and Bisbee.
So your campers come and sleep and go out during the day for sightseeing?
Yeah, they would. Yeah, yeah. That, that's kind of what I'm thinking, you know? I haven't been to Tombstone yet because I've been so busy. I have been to Bisbee, and I used to spend a little time in Bisbee years ago. And, you know, I don't know whether you folks know it, but the Scandinavians are big on Western history and Native American history. She sells thousands of teepees to the Scandinavian countries, and a lot of them come to Tombstone. Yeah.
Mr. Marzky? Did you have a question?
No.
Mr. Young, online, do you have a question?
Generators or no?
No, I don't allow them.
Thank you.
No diesel trucks, no Harleys, no noise, no barking dogs. None. No screaming kids. They can play, but they can't scream.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. I have one question for staff. Are we concerned about Frontier Road, about the access from the, I'm sorry, I lost the name of the private road?
It's Drifter's Way. So, no, there, there was no concerns. This is transmitted out to all of our departments. We did not receive any comments back from our engineering department. He, you know, Drifter's Way, it's a very small segment of private road that he will be, the vehicles will be driving on. It'll be driving past a area that's been cleared for future agricultural activities as well as a existing agricultural support business there to the north. So there won't really be any neighbors that are going to be impacted by the traffic, and we'll go out to Frontier, which is a county-maintained road.
Thank you, Mr. Kirschman. Is there anything else?
I haven't certified my, that Robert just said.
All right, sir. Run that up here.
They're really, I think he's confused on the agricultural-
Get on the microphone, please, sir.
On the agricultural building, unless he's referring to the one across Frontier Way that is the pecan farm. To the west of me is where the two brothers from Tennessee are that put that bill, bill in their place. And I don't know if, are you referring to that or are you referring to the one across Frontier Way?
I'm referring to the metal building that had a large amount of agricultural equipment located on the north, northwest corner of Frontier and Drifter's Way.
You're right. Okay.
Mr. Kirschman, are you ready for your summary?
Yes, so staff does recommend a conditional approval of this request. If staff, if the commission wishes to grant approval, staff recommends the following conditions. One, the applicant shall be limited to no more than six individual sites. Two, Conestoga-style wagons and two teepees. No recreational vehicles are permitted in the campground. A firewise, firewise plan and/or emergency response plan may be required by Development Services if they propose any kind of fire, campfire rings, et cetera. The property owner shall be responsible for maintaining the parcel in a clean and orderly state, free of uncontrolled garbage. The applicant shall provide a revised legible detailed dimensioned site plan with the non-residential permits- permits. Site plan shall show access to all the campsites internal and not to Drifter's Way or the unnamed easement to the west. The applicant is required to complete the bath house within six months of receiving a final inspection of the improvements. The park shall establish quiet hours from a minimum of 10:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. The applicant shall sign private road maintenance agreement for Drifter's Way. All comments by outside agencies are included as conditions of approval, including and not limiting to a drainage analysis that may be required in conjunction with non-residential permit. There is a sample motion on the screen this evening.
Call for the motion, please.
Okay, Madam Chair, I will move to approve the docket SU 23-06, Scott Hip Camp on parcel 111-45-054, with the conditions of approval recommended by staff. Factors of approval constituting the findings of fact.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Limbach, thank you. Before we vote, Mr. Watkins?
I will abstain from this vote.
Thank you. Mr. Montgomery, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mr. Limbach?
Aye.
Mr. Watkins abstains. Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mr. Gonzalez?
Aye.
Mr. Martsky?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
And the chair also votes aye. The ayes have it. Congratulations, sir. This time, I'd like to call for the planning director's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. We have five dockets scheduled for next month, two rezonings, two special uses and potentially a master development plan. May not be ready by next, for next month's meeting. And that's all I have unless you have any. The, one of your dockets from last month's meeting was appealed to the board of supervisors. That'll be heard at the end of this month. It was the guest ranch.
In Benson?
Saratoga Guest Ranch. That was denied by commission. It's being appealed by the applicant.
That's all I have unless you have any questions.
Anybody have any questions for staff?
I do. Surprised, right? It's after the fact, but did I hear on the last item, no recreational vehicles? So, but if people are traveling the country and stop at these campgrounds, they probably had an RV.
He doesn't want RVs in his campground.
Okay. Just curious about that. Park it down the road and walk, I guess. Okay, thank you.
Or just travel in a pickup truck.
Not this. Ride a horse. I was diesel.
All right, if there's nothing else, meeting is adjourned.
Nice.